Good afternoon, welcome to our second annual virtual Maryland Planning Commissioner Training Program. By the Maryland Department of Planning and the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. My name is Chuck Boyd and I'm the Director of Planning Coordination at the Maryland Department of Planning. We want to welcome you to this training and want to thank those that are elected and appointed officials for your service. Since you've joined us as a planning commissioner or Board of Appeals member, you're probably aware that the Land Use Article Section 1-206 that requires all newly appointed members within six months of appointment to take this virtual, usually we do it in-person, educational course, which covers the role of the planning, of the comprehensive plan, the proper standards for special exceptions and variances, and the local jurisdictions, local laws, regulations related to planning, zoning, planning development, subdivision, and other land use matters. We've been doing this in class for about 10 years with Maryland Municipal League and Mako at the summer conferences and with the MPCA at their fall conferences, but due to the cancellation of Mako and MML conferences past year due to the pandemic, this is our second time at doing these trainings virtually. So forgive us if we make any errors along the way, we're still working out the kinks. As you may have noticed on that first slide, the MPCA logo is one of our partners that sponsored this organization. And before I go any further, I want to put a little plug in for the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. If you've not heard about the organization, this is a group representing many of you, focused on providing education and promoting best practices in local planning from the lay planner's perspective. Maryland Department of Planning works very closely with the MPCA Board to develop trainings such as this, and we do these trainings throughout the state whenever possible. Please go to the planning's website for more information about the MPCA or contact Joe Griffiths with the Department of Planning. Based upon the feedback we got from our first virtual training, which was a one, three-hour-long training, we determined that it was best to conduct this into two, two-hour virtual training sessions. This gives us more time to go through the various issues facing local planning commissioners and Board of Appeals members. It also gives us a chance to answer questions and not forcing you to go through a three-hour-long session. Since the legal and the ethics training have traditionally been the most popular engaging sections, we are devoting a two-hour session to that topic, those topics exclusively. So as I said, you know, forgive us for any technical difficulties. We tend to do a lot of these webinars. Department of Planning's done over 40 of these webinars in concert with their Smart Growth Network and EPA's Office of Community Revitalization. But as you, as you all have experienced over time, things just don't go as well as you'd planned, particularly with again the stability of the internet. So good luck to all of us. We're recording this webinar and are planning to update our website with some of the portions of this along the way. So feel free to contact me if you have any suggestions on how to improve the training process and our training and our website. So again, thank you very much for that. Upon completion of this training, you will be emailed a certificate. And as I said before, we're doing this in two sessions and you need to attend both those sessions to complete, to get certificate completeness. I will note that in the upper right-hand corner on your GoToWebinar control panel, there is a place for you to access handouts for today, where you can get the agenda and the PDFs of the presentations. So in case you haven't worked with GoToWebinar feature before, I want to do a little bit of orientation. If you have any questions at all during the presentations, we ask that you utilize the question box to be able to enter your information in, at your question into there. And we will take questions strategically throughout the process at good break points and certainly at the end of the session as well. Want to encourage you to, to ask your questions because that's really what makes this whole training worthwhile. And unfortunately, given the number of participants in this session, we had over 100 that were actually registered. It's, it's not going to be possible for us to unmute to have you say your question. So please use that control panel to control, to submit your questions to us. Now to get started, we were going to take our first poll in a second, but take a look quickly at this map of Maryland's regions. These are the different regional planner breakdowns. So you're going to see a question pop, poll pop up in a second on where you are located. And we want you to answer that question. So we'll have the poll, there goes a poll. So please indicate which region. And if you're not able to respond to the, to the poll, please exit out of full screen mode and you should be able to respond to the poll. We're going to give you a few more seconds to respond. And then my co-presenter here will give us the results. Okay. Forgive me, I have to stretch my screen here a little bit more. I thought I'd read those numbers. You could certainly read them. One more second here. So it looks like the eastern shore is well represented with 27%. Southern Maryland 25%, Central Maryland 17%, the, the Capital Region 15, and Western Maryland 15. So that's really good. So we got a really good distribution across the state. And that's exactly what we want to see. And we're glad that you're all be participating. So the next question we want to ask you is, we want to know what your involvement is with respect to planning. So which of the following best describes your role when it comes to local planning? Are you a planning commissioner? Are you a Board of Appeals member? Elected official, local staff, or a citizen? So just take another second and answer that question. So we get an idea of who's participating in our, our training today. Second, we'll get the results. Great. So it looks like we got 40% planning commission members, 24% Board of Appeals, 24% local staff, elected officials are three, and citizens are 10. So excellent. I'm very glad to see we got great participation from our planning commissions and Board of Appeals members. Great. Thank you so much. Okay, so it's worth noting, as mentioned before, that before, all jurisdictions, big and small, are required to be, have this training and the planning commissioners need to receive this retraining. And we have found in the past that the, really the training is best appreciated when we learn from each other. So again, please feel free to share your, your experiences and your comments in that, that question box to be able to relate your experiences so that we can share those. I will read those responses throughout the process. Please feel free to contact myself or one of our regional planners if you have any questions that we can't answer during this training. And we will certainly provide you suggestions or connections. Your local planners are really your best source of information, particularly given the uniqueness of your community. But we're most happy to support them and assist you in answering those questions. Hey, if you're interested in getting a deeper dive into Maryland's planning, we have an online course that you could take. So feel free to, to peruse that. It goes through in much, much deeper detail than we'll be able to do today. We have an online course that includes more of the topics. And we were very much interested in hearing any suggestion you have to improve that. So feel free to, to take advantage of it. We think it's pretty self-explanatory. And again, I want to thank you not only for taking the test, but really for volunteering your service to your community. It is invaluable, the service that you provide to your communities, and we really appreciate that. Today's speakers will be Joe Griffiths, and he's the Manager of Planning's Local Assistance Training Section. He's going to introduce you to the foundations of planning and to go over the conference planning process and the role of planning commissioners. I'll then follow up and go over the growth management tools of community. So again, please send us questions throughout the process. Next week is going to be highlighting Paul Cuccazella, who's Maryland Department of Planning's Counsel. He's going to go over the planning law and ethics. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Griffiths to introduce us to the foundations of planning and then discuss the planning, conference planning and planning commissioners' role. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Chuck. First, I just want to say hi to people before I start into my presentation. Chuck introduced me correctly. I'm Local Assistance and Training Manager for the Maryland Department of Planning. I oversee our regional planning program. And so we showed you a map earlier of our regions when we were asking the questions about where you're from. We have a regional planner for all those regions. And I'm also the primary staff liaison to the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. So we're, MPCA as we call it, is always looking for new individuals to share their insight, to provide support to newer citizen planners and contribute content to our various educational initiatives. So give me a second here while I set up a few things that I need to set up. And then we will get started. That's one. Okay. And like Chuck said, please bear with us. There's a lot of moving parts to this. And there may be some, some clunky transitions, but we'll get, we'll get to where we need to go. Okay, so this, this course was developed in response to the 2009 Smart and Sustainable Growth Act, making this course required. We did this in partnership with the Governor's Task Force on the Future of Growth and Development, the Maryland Association of Counties, the Maryland Municipal League, and the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. So even though this is a required course, I think many of you are looking at the registration lists are here because you're interested in learning more about this and it might not be required for your role. So we're happy to be here with you to talk about planning, specifically planning in Maryland, and we're eager to answer any questions. Normally, we do these, as Chuck mentioned, at conferences or at request, in-person. I mean, we, we all, I think many of us are following the discussion debate about in-person learning and when to go back to schools, for schools. And I think everybody understands that in-person learning is better. And we really look forward to the day we can get back to that. Offers a lot more chance for engagement, discussion, smaller groups. And while this, this platform doesn't really allow for that, there will be a few times a year where we'll stop for questions where we will ask you, we'll have polling. So we, we encourage you to engage through the chat. It's hard to, to do it verbally with such a large group. But again, we do really look forward to the day that we can, once again, do this in person. So I'm going to start us off talking about the foundations of planning. First, let's look at what makes Maryland unique. So Maryland has always been a magnet for growth. It's a close proximity to the nation's capital. Its beaches and mountains, the wide variety of geography and geology here, farmlands and forests, historic towns, and its central location along the eastern seaboard 995 are just some of the features that make Maryland a desirable place to live and a desirable place to work. All right, Maryland is a small area. I think we all know that if you look at the map, just larger than the smallest, the smaller New England states. So you see it here, 41 out of 50 states in terms of size. However, Maryland is the fifth densest state, right? Only 18 states have more people, with an average 623 people per square mile. This doesn't mean however, that all of Maryland is crowded, particularly if you go to the west, south, or the eastern shore, nor does it have to be. Good local planning is vital to ensuring that Maryland can accommodate everyone who wants to live here. Sorry, I wanted to turn off my camera. Someone do that. Vital assurance of Maryland to accommodate everyone who wants to live here without impacting the natural resources. Planning is extensive in Maryland, and we have a long history in Maryland because if we want to leave our state as, in as good a condition as we found it, we must consider many things about how we live and how we interact and develop Maryland. If the state had the size and population of, say, Montana, planning would probably be less comprehensive. Now, I don't know if anybody here is from Montana. I can't speak for planning in Montana, so, but if you do have any insight, we'd love to hear it. But it is particularly the fact that we are a small, dense state with so many natural resources that has led to a history of planning being a particular focus in this state. All right, so we're going to get into a little bit of that history now. Maryland's planners help determine the efficient use of land for homes, stores, jobs, schools, and services. They work to protect farms, forests, and natural resources with probably the most prominent one being the Chesapeake Bay. Now, we're going to look at a few videos of individuals who can explain a little more about planning in Maryland and their specific communities. So first, we're going to look at Dave Wilson, former director of the Maryland Coastal Days Program, and how he describes how zoning protects farmland and directs growth to cities and towns. All right, this is going to be a part where I need to find something. Let me pause this real quick. If, oh, well, I haven't started yet. If the camera or video should have popped up, for some of you, it may have perhaps gone, be behind the, your main webinar screen. So you might need to minimize or look for it in the background.
Worcester County is primarily rural. About 88% of the land is zoned for agriculture. And it's similar to the amount of land that is actually in agriculture and forestry. Of course, Worcester County has a great tourism industry with Ocean City, Berlin, Pocahontas, and Snow Hill. And outside of that is really nice rural country land based, you know, basically, which exists because of the zoning that we have in Worcester County.
Farming has a really long history. It goes back to the colonial days. And in fact, a lot of the eastern shore is known for still having kind of a colonial landscape intact. It's, it's a major industry. Our agricultural areas had a density of one dwelling unit per two acres. So there was a lot more development potential. It's now basically at one dwelling unit per 30 acres.
I'm going to assume unless I hear from my colleagues that everything is showing correctly. So we will keep going. About the history of planning in Maryland. So planners also help protect historic resources, and Maryland is full of those. The Sustainable Communities Tax Credit has helped rehabilitate about 4,400 historic buildings and create some 25,000 jobs since 1996. I think those numbers are probably a little bit behind as well. I'm sure those have gone up since we put those numbers in there. The state's investment of about 350 million has reached into all of Maryland's 23 counties and the city of Baltimore. All right, now we have another video here from architect Tom Lebo, explaining the benefits of historic preservation. Oh, and if you're not familiar, or if you're not aware, the Maryland Historical Trust, which oversees a lot of this work in Maryland, is a part of the Maryland Department of Planning.
Reclaiming an existing underutilized building is inherently sustainable due to the avoided impact that repurposing something that's already been built is, you know, there's an old saying that the greenest building is the one that's already built.
All right, so let's continue. All right, some more about the history of planning in Maryland. To accommodate growth, planners need to produce and develop plans for, to help develop and redevelop strategic areas in their community to provide places for people to live, work, and play. So now we'll have our first question for you. So can anybody guess where this is? I know you can't say out loud. If you want to put it into the chat, you can. We have some multiple choice questions for you, but I think you'll be able to figure it out based on the content of the day's discussion. Is it London? Is it Copenhagen? Or even Venice, does have some water? Or is it Frederick? Well, the answer is Frederick. I just think many of you probably guessed. And I hope many of you have been able to enjoy Frederick, now part of Frederick, and my colleague, our Planet, Director of Planning Coordination, Chuck Boyd, who already introduced himself to you. I had a big part to do with what you're seeing on the screen and give you all the history you want about Frederick. Okay, so let's look a little bit about the history more generally of planning. We, we're only going to touch the surface of everywhere, all the directions it goes. So 1916, New York City adopted the first comprehensive zoning regulations to apply citywide, which became the model for zoning in the rest of the country. That zoning ordinance had a lot of the characteristics you'd find in today's zoning ordinances, including the regulation of height and uses. Daniel Burnham, you see in the bottom right here, took a leading role in the creation of master plans for the development of several cities, including Chicago and Washington DC, famously telling planners to make no small plans. I will say, when I was studying for the AICP exam, we had, we had a joke that if you can't think of the answer, just put Daniel Burnham. Because he is, he looms larger than the history of planning. Edmund Bacon, who you see on the left, advanced redevelopment in Philadelphia in his long stint as planning director there. The plans for big industrial cities at the turn of the 20th century recommended extensive development and redevelopment and huge infrastructure projects. You think back to Burnham's phrase there, to accommodate their booming populations. Many of the results were great achievements that provide a high return on investment even today. So big plans for places that are not big, right? We're not all Chicago, we're not all DC, can consist of something as simple yet as important as a change in perspective. Perhaps the jurisdiction is not, as it once was, a green field for new development, but is now an aging place that needs redevelopment and revitalization. The next plan can reflect that change in thinking. Created in 1909, the Chicago Plan Commission was tasked with implementing the plan of Chicago, often called the Burnham Plan. There's his name again. The commission was successful at fostering relationships with politicians of several types and in encouraging voters to support its initiatives. It actually used a big marketing campaign to really sell the public on the plan for Chicago and the Burnham Plan. Reflecting the importance that residents placed on good planning between 1912 and 1931, Chicagoings approved 86 plan-related bond issues covering some 17 different projects. But the, the history of planning is not one of unchecked progress. Following World War II, planners and civic leaders in cities throughout the country initiated a concept known as urban renewal. I'm sure many of you are familiar with it, which aimed to clear and redevelop slums in the name of civic and economic progress, often with the support of federal funding. Working class and predominantly minority residents lived in many of these areas, which in many cases were vibrant and culturally rich communities that were simply getting in the way of progress as the professionals and power brokers defined it. Little concern is given to the opinions of the existing residents as freeways and large economic development and housing projects destroyed existing communities and displaced millions against their will. This was Burnham's "Make No Small Plans" taken to a frightening extreme. One person who pushed back, you can see on the screen here, is Jane Jacobs, authors of, author of "The Death and Life of Great American Cities", which is required reading for all planners. She rose to prominence when Robert Moses, a powerful New York City official, attempted to extend Fifth Avenue directly through Washington Square Park. She organized stiff community-based resistance, and Moses eventually scrapped this plan. In that book, "The Death and Life of Great American Cities", Jacobs contended that cities were complex systems, that they should be filled with people, and that density was good. That people and activity on streets provided not only a liveliness and a vitality to a city, but also provided safety and security through eyes on the street. Eyes on the Street is a very common phrase, a classic phrase that planners will use. Bottom line, she argued, planning ought to be about people, not buildings and major public works. So slightly different from the examples I showed you earlier. And these remain core principles of modern planning. So why do we plan? First and foremost, it is so that we can guide sustainable and efficient use of our land. It also, also helps us figure out how much public infrastructure, be it water or sewer, roads and schools, we need to support our population. Planning helps us to protect sensitive resource areas like wetlands and forests or even farms, as we were shown in those videos early, earlier. It also helps us figure out how, how to best accommodate growth in a sustainable way, both in terms of financial costs and resource consumption. And we'll talk about that later when we get into some of the other modules. Good planning helps us improve our economy and ensure that there are adequate spaces for people to live and work. And finally, good planning can develop systems and decision-making processes through which all members of a community can have equitable access to resources and quality of life, including transportation, affordable housing, and recreational and economic opportunities. All right, now we're going to listen to a recording of Robert Elliott. He's a former Queen Anne's County Planning Commissioner, and he's talking about the importance of training. He was also the former MPCA Board, Treasury Board. And this is not, this is just an audio. With a still picture.
When I first started in Centerville, I had come from the Parks Board, and I was very familiar with what I had to do on the Parks Board. However, when I got to the Planning Commission, I will have to admit, I was just completely lost. And that's one of the reasons I got involved with MPCA is that I felt that that was a group that might be able to help me through networking and training, understand what I had to do in the job.
If you're getting the theme here, it's that we're pushing the MPCA. I might mention a couple more. All right, so what is the role of planning? The role is we want to understand the physical landscape and the diversity of your population and the needs of that diverse population, to gauge the appropriateness of developments and the capacity to fit them into a whole, so they're greater than, so it's all greater than some of its parts. And it's a facility for combining and synthesizing different ideas to provide a version that appeals to residents. We often talk about, you know, pursuing the common good or seeking consensus. Not always possible, but it's something that you need for. Right, so but planning has not always been a positive force in America. Going back even further than urban renewal that I already discussed with you, and with the support of New Deal policies, planning and planners contributed to racial segregation and social injustice. In the 30s, the Federal Homeowners Loan Corporation, HOLC, created resident, what they called residential security or red line maps of major American cities. You can see Baltimore's on the screen. Those areas shown in red, predominantly African-American neighborhoods, were labeled at the time as hazardous, and therefore mortgage lenders and appraisers denied services, loans, and capital investment within the red line. The New Deal's Federal Housing Administration, or FHA, denied minority households access to federally backed guaranteed mortgage loans created through the National Housing Act of 1934. If you were to compare this 1937 map to a map of those areas in Baltimore today that have poor economic and health indicators, you'll see that striking overlap from 1937 to today. So essentially, the refusal of the federal government to provide the same housing finance benefits to families of colors with the endorsement of local leaders significantly contributed to today's wealth gap. There are other examples of local planning for inequity riddled throughout our history. Restrictive covenants preventing, preventing black families from purchasing homes within certain neighborhoods strengthened de facto residential segregation even when legal segregation was being dismantled. And exclusionary zoning, which limits the supply of and access to affordable housing through minimum lot size and single, single residence per lot requirements, minimum square footage requirements, and other zoning restrictions that drive up the price of housing, has similarly exacerbated residential segregation in concentrate. exacerbated residential segregation and concentration poverty. Finally, budgets demonstrate priorities, and far too often, American jurisdictions have prioritized capital investment, such as that for infrastructure, recreational uses, and community facilities in wealthier neighborhoods, often at the expense of the rest. However, many communities today are actively planning for equity and to, you know, deal with the legacy of, you know, urban and all sorts of planning in American history. The first steps toward planning for equity is acknowledging sometimes ugly history of planning. Even if current staff and officials did not contribute to this history, they serve in positions representing it, and sometimes need to go out of their way to overcome a legacy of distrust that is often well-deserved. Planners planning for equity need to be as deliberate in their approach as those who are planning for inequity in years past. This may lead to discomfort, but that is a vital part of the process. Listening over explaining, I always focus on that. Planning for equity requires that everyone, particularly those historically and currently underserved, participate authentically in the planning process. Baltimore City and Howard County have implemented, for example, planning academies to build community education and leadership around planning and zoning issues using a localized approach. Planning organizations themselves also need to look internally when planning for equity. Do we look like and represent the stakeholders we are supposed to serve? Do we embody equity within our own organization? Equity lenses are tools used in the planning decision-making process, including resource allocation, that can lead to more racially and economically equitable policies and programs. Planners have traditionally, and for a long time, analyzed development proposals through the lens of their impacts on transportation infrastructure and public facilities such as schools. Why not equity? And then finally, capital investment can be consciously directed to underserved communities in response to, in the past, as we talked about in the previous slide, had they were consciously directed away from such. Now you'll see Sherry Ornstein's ladder of public participation here on the screen to give you an idea of some of the different levels that planners can use to achieve authentic participation. So I'm gonna take a break for questions. I don't know, Chuck, I know you were monitoring the questions, do we have any?
You've been so engaging. People have, for whatever reason, avoided typing in a question, so I don't have any questions at this particular point, but I want to encourage folks to, again, add some comments in here. You added some recently, some additional information about the challenges that we all need to be thinking about, is difficulties of, you know, acknowledging the past inequities and having those uncomfortable conversations at the local level. I know it's an area that we, as the Department of Planning, want to actually help local governments address. So at this point, oh, I do some, when planning to, when planning, oh, got a good one here, sorry, let me, when planning is, planning for equity, how do we bring the citizens, bring citizen participation into that process? I think that's a good question for you, Joe, you're the expert in citizen participation in this process.
I think that's the, that's the first step, right? That's what we would call process procedural equity, where you need to make sure those individuals that you want to participate, or that should be participating because they're represented just as much as anybody else are. I mean, I think we all know, you go to your public hearings, you go to your work sessions, it tends to be the same people there every time, and it's great that those people are involved, but the people that are always there do not usually faithfully represent the full scope of your population. So it's really, really important to reach out to leaders in the various communities or the various groups in your community. These could be religious leaders, they could be community leaders, right? Because if you, as I mentioned, there's that legacy of distrust that's often there, you know, that if a government, a staff member or official are reaching out to individuals in a community that they want to engage, you know, your voice, you asking them to participate and join the planning process might fall on deaf ears, but if you can work with individuals that are already respected and leaders in that community, get them to help you. I mean, obviously, you have to convince them as well, and then you, again, I can't stress enough how important it is to be able to, it might be some uncomfortable situations, you might hear things you don't want to hear, but that's part of the process, you know, really seeking out, you know, making sure your meetings and resources are available in different languages, depending on the languages that are prevalent, are prevalently used in your community. Advertising for meetings and other events using perhaps alternative media, using different ways, but I would say the most, the biggest one is, I mean, is reaching out to leaders in those individual communities and helping them and getting them to spread the word for you. And it really, I mean, there's no, there's no, there's no like magic trick for this, it just takes a lot of work and diligence, but I'm happy if anybody would like to talk about this offline, I could go on this for hours, there's lots of different ways, but it's very important, so thank you for the question.
Damian, Paul, thank you. I will also note that the Smart Growth Information Clearing House, it's smartgrowth.org, has a series of webinars that we did recently on the issue of equity and to take a look at those, and again, it's something that we're going to continue to work on. There are so.
Hello Chuck, I'm not sure if you all can still hear me. John, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear, Chuck went out, I don't know why. I can read you another question here, it was a follow-up by Sam Pearson to the previous question. Is it necessary to visit the property to make a fair decision?
Very good question, but I'm going to reserve that one for next week, because there's some, there are some things you need to know about visiting a property, especially whether you do it in a group or individually, if there's a development proposal, and I would, I would yield to our Assistant Attorney General Paul Cucazella to answer that question, because it can be a vital way to help learn about a project or a property, but there are some limitations to it, specifically when it comes to who all is going with you. So I would hold off, it's a very good question, and I promise it will be addressed next week by a lawyer who can speak much more articulately and effectively to it than I can. All right, I'm a little behind, so I'm gonna keep moving.
Oh, okay, because we had a couple more questions, you want to hold those till after this?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's hold those till, let me just try to get through some more of the content, and there's some questions that we have time for Q and A at the end. All right, so let's look a little bit at some of the, again, not high-level legal stuff because the lawyer will be talking next week. So the state of Maryland has the authority, yeah, the actual state of Maryland has the authority for planning and zoning, however, it delegates that authority to counties and municipalities, and through our, planning is really a part of our federalistic system in America. The states usually have planning zoning authority and they don't. So, and it does this through enabling the legislation that we're going to hear a lot about, probably, or a little bit today, and this one, that enables charter counties to enact local planning and zoning laws, and enables non-charter counties, as well as Montgomery and Prince George's Counties, in specific areas such as required and optional elements for comprehensive plans. There was the former Article 28, created the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission for Montgomery and Prince George's, and then other planning-related state legislation includes things like water and sewer planning, smart growth policies, you've probably heard the word, the phrase "smart growth" a lot here all over Maryland, stormwater management, forest conservation, and many others. So the, in 2012, the General Assembly enacted the Land Use Article, which replaced, pardon, 66B. It has lots of specific provisions, and it's not one-size-fits-all, different ones for municipalities, charter versus non-charter, and then it even goes beyond that. And it combines a lot of the provisions of previous Articles 28, 66B, and then there are two main divisions, Division One is for, it's enabling authority for, sorry, for counties, municipal corporations, Baltimore City, and then Division Two is specifically for Montgomery and Prince George's Counties. And then in 2013, they repealed a lot of the previous articles, so if you ever see 66B or 28 in some, in a document, you know, that's not where you're going to go, want to go find your references, you're going to want to look at the Land Use Article, or the local government article, or state finance procurement article. Here's a map, just briefly, of charter code counties versus non-charter counties in the state. Charter and non-charter counties are governed by that new Land Use Article, Green Counties, as I just mentioned, and then all municipalities as well, as counties are covered by. Real quickly, an overview of some planning milestones. So probably a big one to know is Euclid versus Amber Realities, 1926 Supreme Court case that oversimplified, basically authorized planning and zoning as an acceptable use of the government's police powers. So you might have heard the term of Euclidian zoning, and that is basically more traditional zoning, you know, use, you have clear zones, uses, and height and bulk stuff. So Euclidian zoning, that name comes from this court case, you'll learn more about it next week. The Regional Plan Association grew out of an effort of businesses, professionals, and civic leaders to plan for New York City, and from a regional perspective. So, you know, there's a lot, you know, we have regional plans throughout Maryland, it's a focus of our agency, and a lot of the larger metropolitan areas have regional plans because, you know, people that live just outside the border of a municipality are obviously impacted by planning within and outside of that municipality. So you have the Housing Act, I'm going to zoom over some of these, Housing Act 1937, we saw some of the limits of Housing Acts in the description earlier, and then there's finally the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, requires federal agencies to consider the environmental impact of their actions and create an environmental impact assessment. All right, so here's some Maryland state planning milestones. So during the Great Depression, the General Assembly created the State Planning Commission, which was the first, or the commission developed the Capital Improvement Plan, again, a nationwide first, and a statewide mapping system. The State Planning Office, which is now the Maryland Department of Planning, was founded in 1959, and the State Land Use Act enacted in 1974. The Economic Growth Resource Protection and Planning Act was enacted in 1992 and established divisions, which we'll talk about later, but then it grew. And then 1997, the big one, at least for what Chuck and I work on all the time, the Smart Growth Areas Act established the concept of priority funding areas. Now you've probably heard about that, we'll go into a little bit more of that. And then in 2010, the Sustainable Communities Act passed, combined a lot of different state-funded revitalization and redevelopment programs into one umbrella program. Many of you are probably familiar with sustainable communities, if you have one in your jurisdiction. So let's look specifically at priority funding areas. This is one of the tools that we use to help advance the state's planning policies in prioritizing areas and funding for growth. As we talked earlier, that federalist system, as, you know, planning and zoning is done locally, but the state can have some influence, particularly when it comes to funding. Designated where both the local and state government agree that growth should happen. The PFA designation directs state infrastructure spending, or what we call growth-related spending, into those areas, and it restricts public expenditures, state expenditures outside of it. So it does multiple things, it helps preserve farmland and concentrate, concentrate growth and revitalize areas, right? All those, all those areas that were municipalities in 1997, when the law went into effect, automatically became PFAs, but as municipalities annex new areas, those do not automatically become PFAs, we do review those for PFA eligibility. All right, so the concept has evolved over the years, and I just want to go over some of the basic requirements. These get a lot more complicated real quick, depending on certain factors, but the main ones to note is that priority funding areas, if they're not already designated, can be if they are, if they have existing water and sewer service, or a plan for water and sewer service. For residentially zoned areas, they need an average residential density of 3.5 drilling units per acre, or they can be zoned for employment use, like commercial, industrial, and these are included in a locally designated growth area, and there's also the size of the PFA, based on land needed for the next 20 years, based on growth projections. All right, so here's a little history, 1998 to 2018, newly created parcels within and outside of PFAs. So you see, in that time, far greater number of parcels, just the count of parcels were created inside of PFAs, but if you look at outside of PFAs, the total acreage of those parcels is much greater, right? Because the idea for PFAs, concentrate, concentrate growth, smaller parcels, particularly residential, you saw the requirement for 3.5 drilling units per acre. So the idea here, you know, this is, this is, you know, what you'd want to see, you know, we're aiming for more particularly residential growth inside of PFAs. We can look at some trends, we expect to see about 600,000 new jobs in Maryland by 2040, however, if the land use trends continues as they are, many of these jobs could be located outside of established older communities, which could have a detrimental effect on existing commercial centers, and obviously, the idea is also to, you know, have people live near where they work, reduces transportation needs, commutes, all sorts of benefits, all right? And part of the reason that Maryland communities need strong local planning is that maintaining past trends and growth patterns will have cost implications and beyond, and as well as effects on our quality of life. So it's not, you know, PFAs and building existing communities aren't only, you know, make for stronger communities, preserving farmland, it's also, from a financial perspective, it's much more efficient and responsible financially, so you don't have to extend infrastructure and other items out far, too farther out to communities, so it really has a financial component as well. Here's just some, to give you a little history here of the past 30 years, 650,000 acres have been developed, and putting that into context, it took 300 years to develop the first 650,000 acres across the state. So, you know, we have to be mindful of this, and if we want to preserve all those natural resources we discussed, we need to, we need to take action and plan for it. All right, so I'm a little behind schedule, but not too bad. We do have some review questions that hopefully you're all paying close attention, and we'll be able to answer these, and John, let's first go to review question number three, and John has the polls, but I need to bring it up. I'm ducked, audience view, I'm sorry, give me one second, folks, I'm moving parts. All right, Maryland is the fifth most densely populated state, is that true or false? Okay, that one's actually, that one's true, very close, close there, but yes, it's the fifth most densely populated state, the 18th, right, I think it was 18th in terms of total population. All right, now let's go to review question four. By 2040, Maryland is expected to grow by how many of the following? Is it 800,000 new residents, 320,000 additional households, or 600,000 new jobs? And I will, I will admit that I don't, these are on the screen, but I didn't say them all out loud because I was trying to, trying to complete in time. All right, yes, so it is all of the above, all of those is correct. All right. Question five. Why do we plan? To guide land use, to provide infrastructure, to protect natural resources, or to foster economic development, or all of the above? All right, people are starting to notice the pattern now, if all of the above is on there, it's probably the right answer, yes, it is all of the above. All right, let's go to number six, please, John. Maryland jurisdictions get their planning authority from the governor, the United States, I'm sorry, the United Nations, Land Use Article, the Maryland Department of Planning. So now all the above, so it's getting a little tricky. Yes, correct, Land Use Article, so it's that state-enabling legislation that is, delegates planning and zoning authority to jurisdictions. Right, number seven, John. All right, priority funding areas, complete the sentence, please select one. Make most efficient use of taxpayer dollars, the located outside growth areas are drawn by the state, or only include municipalities. Please click one, make most efficient use of taxpayer dollars, the located outside growth areas are drawn by the state, or only include municipalities. Correct, make most efficient use of taxpayer dollars. And I think, I see a number of people said are drawn by the state, and I don't think I was clear enough in my explanation when I saw this pop up. So they're actually locally designated, but the state concurs, we call, we concur, that they've met those requirements that I showed you. So the state has a role in the designation, but we don't actually choose where they go. So we don't draw them, we don't tell a community that you have to, we're making this area a priority funding area for you, or we want you to. We might say, we might tell them, hey, this is eligible if you want it to be, and we think you should because you'll have access to more funding, but they are drawn at the local level than we concur. Alright, I think that's the last of the poll questions, but if people have any question, I'm the next, I'm the next instructor for the next section, so I can modify as needed. I feel like I'm butting in on anybody's time. If I go too far after the two o'clock hour, I'm letting into Chuck's time, but yeah.
My, my mic is working again, and just one from, from, from Diane. That, are we going to talk about, and you just might want to do it in your next one, talking about this section or the next, about pre-disaster planning for recovery? I have a class coming up at the end of March, and as a general answer is, we may not be covering that in, in great detail, but it is an important area that, particular with climate change impact issues, is becoming more important, and we are trying to develop tools and resources for local governments to address that issue.
Absolutely, they're not on the tip of my tongue, but I know that we have, we have developed plenty of these resources, and the state is definitely on, on top of this. I mean, they're right now, under the lead of Maryland Emergency, I'm sorry, M D, no, M E M A has their own, like, hazard mitigation plan they're developing. I think it's M D E is doing a Maryland adaptation framework. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I'm gonna share my webcam. Yeah, there's all sorts of stuff, I mean, there's a nuisance plan requirement for jurisdictions to plan for, I mean, that's more, that's what they call sunny day or tidal flooding, but you know, that's exacerbated by climate change. I mean, there's all sorts of resources on, you know, like, community rating system, and, and the, the firm maps. They're all, we were talking about, you know, that, we were talking about, we just had a hazard mitigation meeting a few weeks ago. Talking about, you know, higher level, or, or more, let me think of the right word. More mindful building permit requirements, building requirements for, for those, those areas that are in flood prone, flood prone areas, you know, there's, there's state level funding for either preserving and or strengthening green infrastructure, you know, like coastal areas, wetlands, all these things that play a vital role, as vital a role as gray infrastructure in, you know, protecting our communities and making them more resilient. Probably, I don't think I'm going to go into much detail into it in the next one, but please follow up with me, I'm not the expert on that either.
Diane's going to send us the link to some training from FEMA on it, and we're gonna, we'll, we'll include that as a follow-up and, and include it in the chat. So that information there, there. Just real quick to answer one question that Eric Stone had on if there was a minimum standard expected for planning commissioners and Board of Appeals, the minimum standard is to take this course. And beyond that, we are there to address your issues. And then Joseph Gilbert asked the question, I recently annexed property to my town, my town that was included in our PFA. There's a residential development scheduled to be there, but does not exist yet. Can I still apply for the newly annexed area to be included in our municipal PFA? The answer is yes, as long as the, it meets the minimum density requirement of the zoning that occurred during the annexation. It can be, it's eligible to be a PFA. We also look at the, whether or not it's an amenable growth element of your comprehensive plan. The other issue is, is it planned to be served by sewer? And if all of those three things are, are met, it would qualify as a PFA. Again, it has to be designated and request to be designated by the local government first. John, excuse me, Joe, and will you be talking about land banking? So that's another one for you to be thinking about, and let us find, so the land banking was the last question that's on the list here. So in case you want to address that, I think in your comprehensive planning section, I'm gonna let you go so we can get started on the next section.
Yeah, I probably won't be addressing land banking, I, I, I don't, I would not consider myself an expert on that, but we can.
One thing you think about it in terms of it is, is mentioned your new housing models and guidelines, which is, it's an important area for the area opportunity for land, land banking. One more, one more, I'm gonna read here real quick. The Brookfield bypass could have been built and completed for the circa twenty twelve to twenty fifteen anniversary. However, when the, the PFA boundary around side of all any subdivision dips south, excludes the bypass road as it is hanging then icicle, I guess, then return north to the cover over all of the Brookfield Historic District. Take heavy traffic, truck traffic out of the historic district. No one was willing to change the, the PFA boundary, how and why and when PFA can be changed to facilitate the needed infrastructure improvements. I'm going to answer this one for you, Joe, because I'm certainly more familiar with this one, and then we're going to go on. The, the, the case of some jurisdictions, that there is a challenge of getting the PFA designation to perfectly aligned. The standards are not perfect. What happens sometimes is a local jurisdiction may have a zoning over a piece of ground that doesn't meet the minimum density requirement of three and twenty years per acre. The, the, the standards for the three and twenty per acre were, were established by the General Assembly. And we don't control that. So that density standard, so it either is a residential three and a twenty per acre, or it's a commercial. And it's got to also be planned to be served by sewer. In the case of municipalities, it could be sewer or water. So if those planning standards aren't in place, it doesn't meet the standard. So we don't dictate those standards, those are standards that are there, and often are subject to local process. Now, that being said, I just want to make a point saying that there's no guarantee if a property is in a PFA that it's going to be state-funded, guaranteed for state funding. It makes it eligible, but there are exceptions to the process of eligibility to get state funding. So there are other options that can always be pursued. They have to be sometimes approved by the Board of Public Works on a PFA exception for transportation improvement. They can be approved through the Board of Public Works, and that has happened in the past. And, and so I think in the Brookfield bypass, it may have actually had to go that far, or, or it may have to pursue that. So we're more than happy to discuss that, those types of issues, that if there's a dip call with the PFA. And we're also, we tend to bring in the, the experts. We will bring in Maryland Department of Transportation, S H A, when it comes to a road. And they are the ones that the experts with respect to their particular state funding limitations. If it's a sewer project or a water project, we'll bring in M D E. They are the experts in the funding of those areas. So those are two areas that we often have questions about. Encourage you to talk to your regional planner, contact me or Joe Grippis, and we'll be glad to discuss what options. We are here to try to address those issues, but I sometimes can't solve the problem for some of those things. So again, thank you very much, I'm going to turn it over to Joe right now.
Alright, thank you Chuck. Alright, now we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan. And this is, this is a portion of the class that I really miss not having that interaction, because I have a lot of good questions, and I know a lot of you probably have experience in this area. So we'll, we'll make do in our, in our current format, but please, we'll have time for questions at the end. Alright, so these are planning values that can be, that are embodied in a comprehensive plan. Protection of public health and, and safety and welfare, right? We talked about how a lot of the history arose out of that. So how come planning to do this, you know, you have water resources, you have fair housing, public facilities, you know, resource conservation, and you want to preserve land, water, your historic resources. Like, you want a well-designed, functioning, built environment, right, a mix of uses, supportive infrastructure, right? You want a plan that demonstrates predictability and transparency, right? How do you, or how do you think a comp plan is, I mean, this has to do with a Kyle complan is huge, right? It's not just for staff, obviously, planning commissioners use it, elected officials use it, the public uses it. You know, people purchasing, considering purchasing a home, people considering investing in a community, right? And then public participation, why is this a good thing, right? Just in general, it's, it's good governments, it gets you more buy-in on, on your plan. If the public is heavily participating, they're going to be more willing to, to, to implement it and support it as it goes through. And it just increases, general enhances overall knowledge. Alright, so what are the, the planning commission responsibilities when it comes to a comprehensive? So land use article, we talked about that a lot in the last one, section three two oh one, talks about plan preparation by saying, a planning commission shall prepare a plan by studying the pressing conditions, projections of future growth in relation to neighboring jurisdictions. Alright, so, I mean, that means a lot of things, and obviously, they do that in partnership with their, with their staff. And non-charter counties municipalities, major responsibility is to prepare the comprehensive plan. Once the commission is created, the planning commission has the function and duty to prepare this plan for its jurisdiction and to present this plan to the local legislative body. So many of you have probably been involved in this, you know, you make a recommendation, consideration, adoption to that. And, but, and then specifically in charter counties, the planning board's role in preparing a comprehensive plan is determined through the locally adopted procedures, right? So charter counties, you need to look at the, the actual charter and the local procedures of that charter. The next slide, we're going to talk about the, the twelve visions. And I want you to all be think, just take a couple seconds to think about what, what could the twelve visions that comprehensive plans in Maryland's are supposed to, or even require, or required to embody? Take a couple sections, seconds, and we're going to switch to that, and see if you, if you had any of them correct. Okay, so these are the twelve visions. There were seven original visions established in the nineteen ninety-two Economic Growth Resource Protection Planning Act, which we described earlier in the planning milestones. And then five more have been added to subsequent legislation. If you go into the land circle to give you more detail about how each of these are. But I think looking over those, I mean, we've already talked about none of these different, probably all of these topics in one respect you've already been talked about. So it makes sense that these are the twelve visions that a comprehensive plan must embody. Alright, so let's, we'll get more to the comprehensive plan, it is a community's vision for the future, their vision about growth, preservation, infield development, economic development. And it looks at a community's evolution, conditions and trends, you know, you look at a comprehensive, some of its plans, they tend to have a little description of history, historical resources, how, how a community got to where it is, the existing conditions, you know, the current employment, the current housing conditions, the current just population, demographic, and then trends, you know, how, how has it changed over time, and where do we see those trends going, looking at projections, it's very important. That's why a lot of communities wait until the new census data comes out. We expect the census data to come out, and it's September of this year, significantly delayed because of the pandemic, but still, we'll be expected to come out. And then after you look at, you consider your vision, you look at your trends, right, you think about how, what goals, goals we have, what are our desired end state, what are our objectives, how will we know, how will we measure what we got, how we got there? And then what policies and actions, actions and decision points will we use to realize the vision? So comprehensive plan guides growth development and preservation in defined areas. So what are the inventories? I mentioned earlier, demographics, community facilities, transportation networks, acres of different kinds of land use. I even broken down the low-density residential versus higher-density residential. Sensitive, it should include an analysis, what are the road conditions, what's our employment growth, what's our residential capacity with our existing zoning? What are our green and gray infrastructure? It needs to get into recommendations and implementation strategies, you know, can we use business incentives to help implement our objectives? Do we need to modify our zoning, do a comprehensive rezoning as an implementation tool of our comprehensive plan? What funding partnerships and decision-making policies can we develop? And then finally, you need to, comprehensive plans is so, is so often, not just comprehensive plans in general, we don't want them to sit on a shelf. Alright, so you need to have a feedback, how will it adapt over time, how will we measure our success, right? There, there's an annual report requirement for jurisdictions with planning zoning, zoning, and then there's a five-year reporting requirement to see for jurisdictions to look at how, how they're successfully implementing or any modifications needed for their calling. So now we're going to look at the required elements of comprehensive plans. Maryland statute requires certain elements for comprehensive plans, but this is dependent on a charter status or jurisdictional status. So charter counties and non-charter counties have different requirements, but charter counties may have requirements that are inherently, that are locally determined. And then municipal municipalities have other different requirements, but so I'm just going to go over some of the, you have, yeah, these are the required amounts. You have transportation, water resources such as storm, wastewater and drinking water. You have your municipal growth area, that will be the area outside of municipality where they want to grow. Chuck was talking about annexations earlier, when we see an annexation, we review it to see if, if that property is included in the municipal growth area. So this is an example of a municipality actually planning outside of its existing borders. There's some that are optional, like the mineral resources element, which I think is specifically, it's specifically worded, like if current geologic information is available, and if that is a, a part of the economy of your, your community. Other ones, you have land use, very common, community facilities, fisheries is only required if you have, if your jurisdiction has tidal waters. Areas of critical state concern, we put a lot of work into this with our Better Maryland State Development Plan a few years ago. We have a listing of areas of critical state concern for jurisdictions to consider when they're doing a comprehensive plan. If you're interested in that, we can send you some more information, but if you just type in a better Maryland, you will find it. Development regulations and implementation, and then finally, the newest one is the housing element. Chuck was mentioning that earlier, we're talking about land banking. This went into effect, it used to be an optional element, now it's a required element for all jurisdictions, and it went to effect June first of last year. We did, after an extensive planning process, stakeholder outreach process, we put a, developed a housing element models and guidelines to help jurisdictions, particularly those doing this for the first time. We know a lot of jurisdictions already had a housing element, housing is a classic part of a comprehensive plan and planning, but for those who haven't or want to enhance theirs, we include information on there. And one of the links, we don't have a lot on land banking on there, but I know we have a link to some outside resources, because people have been working on housing so long. It's a specific one called Local Housing Solutions, an excellent website, and they have a lot of information on land banking on there. But I, again, I will say, I'm not an expert on that, so I'll have to get back to anybody who has more specific questions. Okay, then here's some optional elements that you can include as well. Alright, let's look at the, give me a second, if you can catch up on my notes. Right, the comprehensive planning process, right, we know this is not easy, not an easy task in any way. Need to grapple with different viewpoints, we need to represent the public interest over the long term, and that ever, that sometimes seemingly impossible idea of reaching a consensus. So, you know, you have, you might have, obviously, you're going to have opposing interests here, you're going to have those focused on property rights versus those that desire to preserve rural land. You'll have those promoting the need for more housing versus those that have a concern over greater density, right? So these are, these are some common ones amongst many others that you'll have to grapple. And you need to engage local staff, create, create advisory groups, hire advisors, all sorts of different ways, but you know, that analysis component, that visioning component, and definitely, definitely the public outreach component are essential. Right, so yeah, getting some of the potential stakeholders, residents, landowners, business people, advocacy, community groups, government agencies. And there's, you know, so many creative ways to do this, both online and in person. I think we're learning a lot because of the pandemic about how to gauge online, and look what we're doing now, we've never done, we've never done one of these trainings online until, till July. And then, as I mentioned earlier, when you get into that, that equity consideration, right? You want to make sure that those who are engaging in your comprehensive plan are a representative of your entire community. Because if they are not, then, you know, the, the feedback you're receiving, and most likely the final product will not represent your entire community. Uh, because if they are not, then you know, the, the feedback you're receiving and most likely the final product will not represent your entire community. Alright, um, so, alright, sorry. Um, so, talking about comprehensive plan work sessions, I'm sure that you're, uh, involved with this on the, on the, or been, maybe been involved this. Right, you have what you call SWOT analysis, strength, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. A classic exercise for, um, you know, consider or, or thinking through the issues and the needs of a comprehensive plan. You want to look at the existing condition, uh, any studies or data, the, the key issues facing your community, is it growing really rapidly? Or is it, uh, or is it losing population or there are revitalization areas? Uh, are you struggling with drinking water, uh, other things? What are the key issues? How to incorporate public input? And then, um, and then you also want to be reviewing and discussing a, uh, plan draft in these comprehensive work sessions. Alright, now, comprehensive plans are, and by no means a standalone document, right? They are connected to a lot of other things. And just to use examples from what we do in the Maryland Department of Planning, right? We review, we review a lot of different documents that come in for consistency with the comprehensive plan. Chuck, uh, and we described earlier the annexation, right? If you're wanting to be annexing an area into a municipality, it needs to be, that area needs to be included in your municipal growth. Right, or it's, you know, you're not in violation of the requirements of, of an annexation. You'll see many jury, we have one, right, I'm not going to say the jurisdiction, but we have a municipality, municipal comp plan amendment right now that we're reviewing, that they know they want to annex a property, or two properties in this case, but it's not in the municipal growth area. So they're going through the process, right? We need to amend our comprehensive plan first to incorporate these areas into, uh, our municipal growth, uh, element. And then we can go forward and annex it, that's the proper approach, right? Because you never, you can't be expected to have complete perfect vision over 10 years. What are all the areas that our municipality is going to want to annex? It's perfectly fine to go back and adjust your comprehensive plan to add in these new, new areas, but it would need to be done if you want to annex it. Right, school planning, there's the, uh, educational facility master plans that, uh, local education agencies submit. Um, those should be consistent with the comprehensive, uh, water resource plan, uh, transportation plan. And we look at priority funding, I'm sorry, no, pri- um, priority. Transportation priority letter, priority letters, priority, the words priority, smart growth and sustainability is in everything, I'm mixing up. So, uh, priority letters are requests from a, a county, um, for, uh, state funding for various transportation, either studies or infrastructure development, those need to be consistent with the comprehensive. And then finally, comprehensive water and sewer plans. If you want to extend water and sewer service to an area, these are controlled by the county. If you want to extend water and sewer to an area, increase a facility's capacity, those need, that needs to be consistent with your comprehensive plan as well. So they're all closely interconnected, it's again, it's a stress, it's not a standalone document. Um, so inter-jurisdictional coordination is very important. I was talking earlier about, you know, his, history of regional plans. Uh, you should be, uh, comprehensive plans should, um, I mean, it's essential to really include neighboring jurisdictions and government agencies in the plan at all. Right, if you're a municipality, you should include your, the, your, the county you're in, uh, or in neighboring, um, neighboring, uh, municipalities. If you're a county, you should include all your municipalities, you should include neighboring, uh, counties. You should include any regional areas, any metropolitan planning organizations, like the Baltimore Metropolitan Council. Uh, I mean, because there's so many different planning aspects that cut across, we know this, that cut across, uh, across jurisdictional boundaries, right? Water flows freely between jurisdictional boundaries, uh, roads are used, um, by all sort of people from all sorts of jurisdictions. Some people just driving through your jurisdiction, I remember talking about the bypass earlier, you know, um, you know, that, that, that is something that you consider regionally in partnership with your, your neighbors. Um, and a new one, where, here's an example on the, the screen, a project that I'm currently working on is, um, improving compatible use planning between military installations and their jur, and their neighboring jurisdictions, right? Military installations are very important economic drivers in Maryland, particularly in Maryland. Uh, lots of jobs, uh, not just on the facility, they spur and incentivize or, um, induce jobs outside and in the community. However, a lot of the, of the, the actions that go on inside the, the border fences or military installations have an impact on the land outside. So, you know, do you have buffer areas? Do you preserve the land around the, the, uh, military installation? So it's not just other government agencies, you know, other big facilities, big organizations like a university or a military installation should definitely be included, uh, as part of this coordination. Okay, um, so we're viewing, uh, the comprehensive plan. So the draft is developed by the planning commission, right? Uh, and then they, they provide 60-day public notice and, and either before that 60-day public notice or part of that 60-day public notice, they, you send the draft to the Maryland Department of Planning, right? You haven't voted on it yet, uh, you, you basically come to an agreement that, uh, this is the planning commission's blessed version of the comprehensive plan or the comprehensive plan amendment. Could be as small as just modifying municipal growth element that I mentioned earlier. You send it to the Maryland Department of Planning for this 60-day review period. When we receive it, we send it out to our sister agencies, Maryland Department of Transportation, Department of Commerce, Environment, Housing Community Development, DNR, Maryland Historical Trust, and then our own internal agencies. Our regional planners, the division that I manage, are the project managers. You know, after 30 days, we request that our sister agencies and internal divisions send their comments back to the regional planner. The regional planner compiles it into one document, one review document, and then we send it back within that 60-day time period. Then that our comments become part of the public record for the required public hearing. Uh, and as part of that public hearing, um, the, the planning commission doesn't have to, but they often do recommend it for adoption and they send it to the legislative. Then the actual legislative body, council, board of county commissioners, whomever, uh, they have to have their own public hearing, uh, required. And they may modify, remand or other, other, um, parts of the plan. Requirement though, um, is that if they don't do anything with it within 90 days after they receive it from the planning commission, um, then it, it is basically adopted. Now, they can, they can put extensions and other things, uh, it doesn't happen often, um, but it is a point to know that the, the Land Use Article does have some timeframes. And then it is required for review every 10 years. This is not required and update every 10 years, even though a lot of jurisdictions do do it every 10 years, but usually aligning with that new census data. It's not required to update it, particularly smaller municipalities that don't see a lot of development pressure and growth and change. Uh, they don't miss, you don't have to update your comprehensive plan, but it is required to review it every 10 years. Look it over, uh, planning commission would discuss, you know, is this, is this still applicable? Are these still our objectives? Maybe you make a small change here or there, which would require this whole 60-day review period and amendment, but you're not required to. Just need to be required to review it. And we have, um, uh, uh, on our website, if you go to comprehensive review or comprehensive plan tenure review cycle, they'll have every municipality and every, every municipality of planning and zoning authority in Maryland and every county. It'll give, uh, you know, the anticipated due date for the five-year, um, midpoint review and then the 10-year, the five-year midpoint report and the 10-year. Alright, so we have lots of, uh, comprehensive planning, uh, assistance. We, NDKR agencies provide assistance, here's just a few examples. I mentioned our housing element models and guidelines, I know I'm running way behind, so I need to speed up. Um, any break or any questions?
Yeah, just, you've actually covered both, both the, or now we have a new one, uh, but, um, one question talked about the difference, uh, Bill, uh, different plans that are out there from hazard plans to, uh, transportation plans and the comprehensive plan, um, and, and the, the challenge. Uh, and I'll kind of answer this for you and, and baseball, I was thinking, I said, the comprehensive plan should be your guiding principles. And then all of these other plans are often functional plans, so they should be consistent with that and should always be mindful. Sometimes those functional plans get ahead of the conference plan. So that in general, you should always go back and, as Joe mentioned, do that review, see if everything's in line and then go through that process. And as you also mentioned, how often the conference of plan is required, uh, conference plans required to be updated every 10 years and should be reviewed at least every five years through a report on your annual reporting of the, the status of things. Next question is if council modifies the plan, will they have, uh, to come back to the planning commission? And, uh, I'll answer that question for you, Joe. The law changed for municipalities, uh, actually for charter counties, was always there in place. But now the, the governing body, after they hold a public hearing, they can change the plan. So the plan has to start with the first, the, the, uh, um, planning commission. You are the, uh, custodians of the planning, of the, of the plant's preparation, but it has to be, uh, uh, ob- obviously adopted by the, the local government, uh, governing body. And the governing body can amend it, um, if they choose to, but they have to go through a public hearing. And then are there parameters for the reviews versus new plans? And is it up to the municipality? I'll leave that for you, Joe.
I'm sorry, I was looking at something else, ask it one more time.
Are, are there parameters for review versus a new plan, uh, or is it up to the municipality?
Uh, it is, well, uh, if you're saying internal review.
Yeah, I, I, I'll try to wing this one for you. The answer is they're, they're basically the same.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood the question.
Are there parameters for reviews versus new plans, um, versus a new comprehensive plan? Or is it up to the municipality?
Yeah, I guess my question is that, is that question you asked about the, the review, is that the local review or are you talking about the state's review?
I, I think they're talking about their local, uh, review in terms of like to do their annual plan, uh, annual reports and then their, their five-year review.
Yeah, okay, yeah, then I agree with you, they're the same, yeah.
And then lastly, how does municipality deal with underground, uh, steam when they're trying to develop a particular parcel? Straight, I'm assuming it's underground, underground streams, uh, and, and good luck on that one, Joe. How does municipality deal with underground streams when they are trying to develop a particular area?
Well, well, I, I don't know, I can't speak necessarily to underground streams. I mean, hopefully those areas are mapped out in your community, uh, you know where they are. Like I know, I can speak from example, I use, it's not specifically underground streams, but, um, I used to work for Loudoun County and we had some karst landscape, K R S T landscape, um, and we had an overlay on top. And this was, I mean, this is zoning overlay for all of our karst areas. So they had their base zoning, the residential, whatever, agriculture, whatever. But then you had, we, the, the county knew that there was karst landscape underneath, which is a little bit more fragile. You couldn't, yeah, just be careful on what you, how you developed on top of karst. So they had extra overlay on top that was more restrictive and just specific to protecting that development against that landscape. So I would say for underground streams, I don't know all the technical problems with that, um, but I'm sure there are some trick, some tricks to that. So one way could potentially be to have something like an overlay district over top of those areas where you have streams or just, you know, have, you know, building permanent requirements and other things that could address it. Hope that helps, but I'm sure there are many others.
I, I think that, that, we got one last one, Earl said, asked the question, how has the PFA process changed over time? And I'm going to try to answer that. The law has not changed, uh, the law changed, the law was initially adopted in nineteen ninety-seven. In two thousand and six, that the law changed to require, uh, a capacity analysis to be done to ensure that you're not designating more PFA area than, um, is needed for growth purposes. Uh, it, it, uh, also required municipalities to no longer be able to automatically have an area be a PFA. So since two thousand and six, the law really hasn't changed at all. Uh, I will say we've tried to, uh, improve the education and, and department planning, educate folks and to make, uh, uh, some tools to, to demystify the law. And, uh, we are trying to be as accommodating as we can within the law in terms of the issues of it. Uh, and we, we, we are doing, uh, as needed, uh, PF, what they call PFA exceptions, particularly when it relates to, uh, environmental issues. So, uh, at this point, I think, Joe, well, let's go on to your, uh, final part.
Okay, I might have to go through this pretty quickly, but the, we started looking at the planning commission roles and responsibility. So again, you are not alone, uh, you know, we, we, we did an MPCA at a conference a few years ago where the theme was the vital partnership between citizen and professional planners. Um, we, we strongly advocate for that, but we're also part of Maryland Department of Planning, you have the MPCA. Told you I'd bring them back again, uh, and then a lot of other, uh, different partners. So, so you are not alone, um, but, uh, you're, you're always welcome to reach out to us if you have questions. Alright, so there are formal versus informal roles determined by the jurisdiction. Um, the key responsibilities, again, crafting the comprehensive plan, recommending ordinances and regulations, particularly those to support the comprehensive plan, um, creating and applying, uh, implementation tools and implementing those 12 visions I mentioned earlier. Um, so we've already talked about the comprehensive plan, well, just reminder, uh, you want to help the community achieve its potential and implement the vision, right? So you go through this whole process of, of, of developing, uh, recommending for approval, going through work sessions, going through the 60-day review process and then you get, finally get adopted, right? But as you're not done then, you don't want it to be done then, you don't want it to sit on a shelf. So if you want to continue to implement the vision, uh, and the policies within that, I can always, because soliciting public input, um, and then, you know, the 60-day review and the 10-year. Alright, so for non-charter counties and municipalities, uh, uh, planning commission can recommend zoning ordinances, subdivision and development regulations. Uh, some, in some instances, capital expenditures needed to implement the comprehensive plan, uh, and other implementation rules. Um, give me one second here, um. Right, there's some areas in which the planning commission has approval authority. Uh, these areas include approval of the use of public land, such as for public streets, parks and other public purposes. Uh, this is done through their authority to review and approve subdivision and site plans. And the authority to review and approve some types of developments such as minor subdivisions can be delegated by non-charter counties and municipalities, where such delegation is specifically enumerated in the authorizing provisions. Delegation can be, and can be even down to an administrative process. These are all, these are done through the local rules, so I definitely encourage you to look at your local processes, your local rules. A lot of it, as we mentioned earlier, is enabling legislation, it's delegated down to localities to determine their own. Alright, um, charter counties, uh, I have approval and advisory roles of the planning, uh, of the planning commission approval and advisory roles determined by the provisions in that charter. In some charter counties, authority for approval of rezonings, special exceptions and variances given to an administrative hearing officer. While other provisions such as review and recommendations on the capital improvement plan, uh, is given to a planning advisory board. Um, so definitely, if you're in a charter county, you want to make sure you review what, uh, what roles and what authority you have been given. Alright, so while we covered meetings somewhat already, it's important to reiterate the importance of open, transparent meetings conducted by the planning commission. Planning conditions conduct meetings for a wide variety of reasons. They could be, you know, your formal public hearings, just general public meetings, or it's work sessions where you really dig into the details. Um, work sessions are normally conducted when the planning commission wants to get more detail, like I mentioned, on a specific proposal, project, or even a comp plan, than they would normally get just from the public hearing process. Uh, work sessions provide time for planning staff and other professionals as needed, such as architects, engineers, if you have any consultants, um, to entertain questions, to inform, uh, to present information to the planning com- commission, but also entertain questions. While they, they are open to the public, um, normally, public testimony is not taken at these meetings and that's for a public hearing. It's important that public hearings of the planning commission are conducted in a fair, consistent manner so that from meeting to meeting, the public sees this regular process, knows what to expect. Um, and then, um, and then they'll know when they're, when and how they can eventually provide public input. Again, it's that predictability, transparency, uh, that we'll keep, um, reminding you about. Alright, so, um, yes. So, in reviewing the roles and responsibility of planning commission and board of appeals members, it's important to note the need to review and understand documents being presented at public meetings, hearings and work sessions, as well as material that is sent to members in advance of such meetings. So there's often homework, I think a lot of you know that. Um, jurisdiction should provide an overview of the type of material being transmitted and how to make the best use of it. Uh, this includes staff reports, any site plans, plot plans and other documents such as any special studies or reports, such as those for transportation, tra- traffic, environmental studies. Site plans such as the one illustrated here typically show the layout of roads, stormwater facilities, landscaping buildings, as well as the taping of, uh, important site. Yeah, we, you can see acres, units, the density, things like that. Then my final slide, before we go into, uh, the review and any final questions, is about the septic's law, which is a very complicated law. Uh, but I'm going to go, go over the, the basics here. Um, really, we call it the septic's law, but it's, it's from the Sustainable Growth and Agriculture Preservation Act of twenty twelve. Um, local jurisdictions are required to identify areas for, uh, called tiers. Um, where new sub, new subdivisions will be served by either onsite septic systems or public sewer systems. Uh, these tiers are based largely on local land use plans, zoning, water and sewer plans and adopted agricultural plans and policies. It's another thing that, you know, these are incorporated, required to be incorporated into your comp plan. But we also, when we get them, when we review them, um, we review them for consistency with the comprehensive. So it definitely has connections to those other, um, other land use plans. Um, in order for jurisdictions to allow new subdivisions in areas outside of those areas served by a public sewer. In order for jurisdictions to allow new subdivisions in areas outside of those areas served by a public sewer, right, these tier maps must have been adopted by December thirty-first. So that that was the requirement. So if you wanted to have subdivisions off of public, outside of those areas, public sewer, which would be tier one if they're already served, tier two if they're planned to be served. These plans had to be adopted by December twenty-two. The process for initial adoption is somewhat flexible. These maps were maybe adopted by an executive or administrative decision or through a public process. Maps are readopted through a public process, the local planning board commission may be involved as a step in that process. But the biggest role for the planning commission has to do with reviewing major subdivisions. Those are the the definition of majors typically defined locally in tier three areas. So tier three areas are areas where you can have a major subdivision. Chuck reminded me, is that five or seven in in statute, unless it's defined locally, I always mix that up.
It it's it's usually seven lots or greater for for a major subdivision.
Okay, thank you. So a major subdivision can be in a tier three area, it cannot be in a tier four area. So but the the law set it up so for major subdivisions in tier three areas, the planning board and commission has oversight through that and.
Joe, just just clarify, it's the major subdivisions on septic systems.
Yeah, on septic.
Tier one and two are planned for sewer, but tier three, major subdivisions on septic have to be reviewed by the planning commission.
So, sorry if I if I misspoke there, but yes, that is that is the correct, that's the correct answer. So I think that's the end of my slides here. Sorry, I ran over about fifteen minutes. We can go through some of these review questions. I'll give you one second. Let me interview, expand that. Review question number eight, John. Right, a comprehensive plan is a reflection of the community's vision of the future, community evolution, conditions and trends, goals, objectives and policies to realize the vision, or all of the above. Alright, hundred percent. Good, that's correct, all of the above. Alright, number nine, John, please. Number of planning visions to be addressed in the comprehensive plan is what, seven, eight, twelve or twenty? Alright, it is twelve. It was originally seven, so I can see why somebody put that answer, but it was, it is now twelve, it's been raised. Alright, number ten, John. Comprehensive plan process should involve residents, landowners, business people, government agencies, advocacy or community groups, or all of the above. Oh, yeah, I should share my webcam again. I told you, John, I was going to forget to do that if you didn't do that. Yes, all of the above, absolutely. Okay. Question eleven, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one, it should be eleven. Comprehensive plan is required to be reviewed every ten years, true or false? True, yes, there's a, there's a five-year reporting requirement. Basically, how you implemented the previous one, it needs to be reviewed every ten years. And then twelve. Planning commission does as follows, adopts zoning ordinances, approves building permits, secures capital findings and infrastructure, or oversees the development of a comprehensive plan. Yes, oversees development of the comprehensive plan. They may have parts to play in some of the other ones. But if you look at the verbs at the beginning, they don't actually adopt or approve or secure any of those. Review question thirteen. Alright, why should planning commission or why must they be open to the public? It's necessary in the process, transparency and decision-making, and the Open Meetings Act requires it. We can really go over the Open Meetings Act much, but that's out there as well. We do have training at the MPCA conference on the Open Meetings Act, if anybody wants to learn more about that. All of the above, absolutely. Alright, I think we should skip the Q and A for now, because I am over, and we can hopefully save some at the end. Chuck has a lot of, Chuck is about to get into the details of the growth management tools available in in Maryland, so I think I just want to, we should skip over to you, Chuck.
Agreed. Okay, we're moving right along here. Again, thanks for everyone for staying with us. We've had some great questions, so my job now is to talk about the the growth management tools that local governments have at their, in their toolkit or their tool belt. And to talk about which ones you particularly want to focus in on and which ones may be appropriate more for one jurisdiction versus another. So and it it's important to recognize also, if you recall that map that Joe showed of which counties you are in. The charter counties have a lot more power and autonomy than non-charter counties. Municipalities have their own set of rules and they're similar to non-charter counties. And and municipalities in some instances have more autonomy than than non- than non-charter counties at the time. So depending on, I'm going to be talking mostly in generic terms. So it all depends upon where you where you stand is where you sit in that process. So the most powerful tool that any local government really has is its zoning regulations. It's it's comprised of both the text and a map. It regulates the bulk of dimensions, density, height, massing, deals with setback requirements, et cetera. So it covers a lot of different things. So you have these great maps. And this is a typical, what it would Joe mentioned before about Amber versus Euclid versus Amber Realty, where they separated all the uses into individual separate things, a lot of residential uses. And the densities are in one area, and your employment areas are another area, and never the two shall mix. That was the way a lot of the the post-World War Two zoning ordinances and plans were together. And what it tended to do is it created traffic, because people had to go from one place to the other. And unless you were in in the more, the more, I'll call it organic cities that predated zoning, you had to travel from one 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 area to another. Mixed use was an anomaly early in the the sixties and the seventies of planning. But things have changed, so that you traditionally Euclidian zoning was the way to go. But modern zoning ordinances now really incorporate mixed use much more so. You have these planned unit developments. A lot of the planned unit developments initially included just exclusively residential. Planned unit developments now tend to have a lot more mix of uses and a mix of of densities and and residential types. In addition to the fact that you have a zoning ordinance, it controls uses and densities and the placement of structures on a property, there's often overlay zones. Overlay zones tend to be for environmental purposes, could be historic purposes. They tend to not change necessarily the the full array of allowable uses, but it it usually requires you to do more in terms of the process. You may have to go to a historic district, you may have to have an environmental review. You may have to have a little bit more buffer or density, or 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 some type of separation because of a of it of an overlay zone. And so there's a whole variety of overlay zones along the way. So that traditional zoning of Euclidian and mapping out an area, that that was, you know, it's now morphing, they're often called hybrid zoning ordinance, but a lot of places are using this form-based code, which where you really regulate the structure and have less concern about the uses within that structure. Again, it's really going back to the days of what it was when there wasn't any zoning. And I, as Joe alluded to, I live in Frederick. And Frederick, downtown Frederick could not exist under most zoning ordinances the way it is today. What the charm and the character of that area has developed, has has evolved over time. And it's an area, it's an issue that we're trying to replicate sometimes. So the second most powerful tool in your toolkit or your tool belt for regulating land use is subdivision regulations. Subdivision regulations deal with this, with a division of one or more lots in in the purpose of usually for development. You you subdivide land for the purpose of transferring ownership from one property owner to another. And and it usually involves maybe some kind of land development activity. Sometimes there are occasions where subdivision is actually the consolidation of lots together. Redevelopment often will have subdivision plaits recorded for the consolidation of properties. Subdivision regulations lay out standards about the streets, how wide the streets are going to be, what kind of appurtenances and materials along those streets. Will you have curb, gutter, sidewalk, stormwater? You know, street trees, streetlights, all of those specifications are usually built into your regulations related to subdivision. So that if a new street is part of a subdivision, the developer knows what they have to have in it. Also includes landscaping, so you know exactly what kind of green spaces are to be included as part of that right-of-way that may be conveyed to the local government. I mentioned this before, there are a lot of functional plans out there, and Joe alluded to it and mentioned the the fact that the are, these, all these other plans are going on. You have to be consistent with your comprehensive plan. But one of the really strong controls over implementation of your comprehensive plan is a water and sewer master plan. Water and sewer master plans are prepared at the local level, usually at the county level, in coordination with municipalities, if they have their own water or sewer treatment plants, submitted by the counties to the Maryland Department of the Environment, we review those. But they control the timing and what areas are to be served and when they're going to be served. And the sizing of the pipes and the design of the wastewater treatment plants, et cetera, et cetera. They need to be updated every three years, but there is very potent source of being able to control where you want to grow in your community, where you're not ready to grow, you change it. The water and sewer plants typically have a series of guidelines of what standards, there are a lot of different variations. Each each county is different. It incorporates specific projects, capital costs, again, service areas. And, you know, the, when they have to upgrade the plants, so they monitor every three years the the amount of capacity left in, left in their plants, so that that factors into the process. And again, this all folds back into a comprehensive plan and and what you plan for future service areas and future road areas in a community. So there's issues that you have to think about as you're you're developing your your water and sewer plan, you know, where are those future service areas? You know, obviously that consistency issue. And you also have to be really, you know, cognizant of the the future growth that you're going to have. Are you going to have enough service customers to actually pay for the infrastructure that you want to extend? So so you have to have, there's a close relationship to the actual amount of customers you have to the size of your service area. You want to think about infill, you want to think about also, do we have enough capacity in our existing sewer lines to add in a new infill housing development? Or am I going to have to upgrade those? You have to look at your water and sewer plan, things like what's called I and I, infiltration and inflow. That is, are the old sewer lines getting water from groundwater sources? And how do we tighten them up? Because we we have to treat all that groundwater that goes into our sewer system. So those are things you have to factor into when I accommodate land for employment areas. So in addition to the water sewer plan and its control, many jurisdictions will adopt adequate public facility ordinances to manage growth. It's not intended to be a stop for growth, but it's actually to able essentially brakes. Where communities grow so fast and and their their infrastructure can't keep up with them. This is particularly true in the case of schools, they sometimes pump the brake and say, hey, we're going to have to put a restriction of the number of permits that we're going to issue this year. APFOs have have come out of, are are no longer as popular in some communities, some communities have actually discontinued them. Most communities, if they're going to adopt them, they adopt them for school purposes. So we've got thirteen counties and twenty-three municipalities that have adopted APFOs over time. Again, it's not intended to stop growth, but it is intended to regulate that growth process. Jurisdictions can adopt them, they don't have to. And then again, development approvals are often contingent upon publicly phasing that that the development activity that's occurring with us as well. And it's really important to have standards in place that you you ensure the the valid, the validity of the ordinances can be challenged if you don't have that. APFO jurisdictions have to report on them every two years to the Department of Planning. And we then submit a report to the state, to the General Assembly on the impact of those APFO ordinances on development activity. And we had these reporting requirements. Local planning commissions should get that annual report and and every other year get an annual report of its impact on APFOs. One of the benefits of that APFO reporting is really so you at the local level know what your regulations are doing or impacting development activities. Some some particular APFOs related to streets or traffic may actually cause you to need to change your capital improvements planning process. Okay, so we're going to now go into some other tools that are out there real quickly. The, there are capital improvements programs, I I mentioned, this is the really the means by which you really allocate resources. Joe mentioned this before in terms of the importance of where do you invest in your community. Capital programs, capital budgets are really your, your, where you're investing, and they should be consistent with your comprehensive plan. These are a list of the the sources, either typical ones, general funds, that's your 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 property tax dollars usually, you may actually do bonds. Block grant programs, if you're a larger jurisdictions, that's an available area. POS funding is a state program, there's a local side POS program, and there's state and federal programs as well. Then obviously, there's also impact fees from the developer contribution side as well. Typical process of CIPs, capital improvement, it's just like a comp plan. You do an inventory of existing communities, you analyze what those areas are, you figure out what the priorities are. You have a criteria for evaluation, you set that those priority projects, and then you get an approval. Sometimes it goes through the planning commission process for review of those things, ultimately is approved by your elected officials. Municipal annexations is another important tool at the local level and the for municipalities in terms of controlling your own destiny, your growth. You do not have to annex if you're a municipality. The only reason you annex is because you want to. And and you have have a choice. If you do, you're actually in the driver's seat to some degree with respect to. with respect to annexing a piece of property. A property owner in Maryland, annexations are not, tend to not be involuntary in Maryland as a general rule. There are some rare occasions and some petition processes, you theoretically can do some involuntary annexations, but if more than, I want to say, more, a majority or supermajority of the property owners or voters, it's usually not a problem. So annexations tend to be mutually beneficial and mutually desired. So an annexation may occur only because a property owner wants to get access to the municipal's water and sewer services, they want to be annexed because they know they can get higher densities than in the county, and so there's a reason to be annexed. That means that there is also motivation on the property owner to be annexed and be willing to pony up certain commitments. Same thing goes with the municipality, you don't have to annex, and therefore you're in the driver's seat in terms of what kind of conditions of annexation you may require. You may limit certain densities or certain provisions, you may say, if you're gonna annex, you're gonna do X, Y, Z of capital improvements. That's a decision that's between the property owner and the individual. So what are the requirements for being annexed? Well, you gotta be contiguous to municipality, the existing municipality, you can't be disjointed and not be contiguous. Obviously, you can't incorporate or try to annex something that's already been incorporated in another jurisdiction, and you have to avoid, and you can't create an enclave. Now, Maryland has not defined what is considered, there's some case law or some discussion about this, but you can avoid creating an enclave by creating a little umbilical cord to the county. So you have to look at the area that you're annexing. We actually had a review recently where we advised a municipality that they needed to adjust their boundaries because they were annexing a piece of the town right next to them, and secondly, they were creating an enclave. They adjusted and corrected that, and through the annexation process, there's a 30-day review period that we have the ability to advise them on certain things along the way. There are certain things that you have to be mindful as you annex. You can't annex and increase the density more than 50% than is in the county without getting an approval from the county, so that's something you have to be mindful of. Sorry. One other tool we have in our toolbox at the local level, and these are really could be useful, a very powerful tool if used, they're not used that often. Their development rights and responsibility agreements, really it's a private agreement between the government and the developer with certain conditions, and it allows for you to get something from the developer in exchange for commitment that you're not gonna change the rules on the development over, for a period of time. They tend to be five years unless it's extended, or there's in the agreement. I have seen development rights and responsibility agreements for 20 years. Those are frowned upon by citizen groups because you're tying the hands of future elected officials. They could get challenged in court, so development rights and responsibilities are a way of getting mutual agreements, but they have their pitfalls and challenges, so just be mindful of that. I think Joe alluded to it, we have a lot of other tools that we try to make you aware of. The Mako and MML have some great resources out there. We are continually trying to build our set of resources and models and guidelines. We mentioned before the Smart Growth Information Clearinghouse, smartgrowth.org is a website that we maintain, and that has information related to, you know, equity issues and other things, that's, we're gonna continue to develop that. And I'm gonna look at some questions right now. Gerald's got best of the environmental issue. Should we have a county or a state power plan like water and sewer plants? Good question. Yeah, that's something that I will, I think there's been some legislation proposed for that in the past. I don't know if it's right now, given the most recent instances in Texas that raises a real interesting issue. I do know that they're looking at that and continue to look at that issue. So yeah, that's a good question. It, I will say about the power plants, because unlike water and sewer, which is controlled by the counties, power plants are utilities that cross jurisdictional, cross state lines, so it's a lot more complicated. FERC controls a lot of those issues, and so it's a federal issue as well, so it's a lot more complicated, but it's an area that is worthy more discussion. What's the relationship between APFOs and development rights and responsibilities? Question, so that they're two separate ones, but they also can be combined together in the case of development rights and responsibilities. You can essentially allow for some crediting of future capacity through a development rights and responsibility to address an APFO. So again, it's usually very site-specific, and it's something that is unique about there. The proffers are right, Gerald pointed out, called proffers in Virginia. Proffers in Virginia are a little bit different than the exactions in Maryland. Proffers in Virginia is the way that they negotiate questionably, I would argue, where if you give me this, you'll get your zoning, or get your density, or your subdivision. It's controlled through subdivision technically, but Maryland and Virginia have different regulations in the area, but it's an interesting area, and so we'll say that the observation is, what you think is true Maryland for planning and zoning, you go to Pennsylvania or you go to Virginia, it's not quite the same. So the regulations and the planning law of Maryland is unique to Maryland. PFAs don't exist anywhere else other than Maryland. Can you pick or choose the areas that you want to annex? Yes. Your municipal growth element should spell out where you want those future annexation areas. You should prioritize those areas, and you should incorporate that into the comp plan, and that will guide you on which areas for annexation. Can all developers' responsibilities be in an annexation resolution? Question that I'm not gonna, I can't answer really well, because I think it's more of a legal question than, and I would defer to Paul Cucazella, so you may want to bring that question up. Again, development rights and responsibilities are legal issues. I do think you can incorporate a development rights and responsibility and an annexation at the same time, but again, each one of those are really unique in that respect. So the bewitching hour is coming upon us, and so we're gonna go through our questions right now. So the first question on our list is, zoning in Maryland can change through? You tell me which.
The selections are a comprehensive process?
A comprehensive process, a piecemeal process, a referendum, a lottery, sorry, John. And the question is, yes, comprehensive plan process. Next question is 15. Subdivision plan should show the proposed location of streets, utilities, landscaping, or all the above? All the above, correct. Next question. According to state law, the county water and sewer plant should be kept current as defined by every year, every three years, every 10 years, like the comprehensive plan, whenever the county sees the need. The answer is? The answer is every 10 years, actually. I'm sorry, every three years, what am I reading? I'm sorry, every three years. Yes, 58% of you got it, every three years. Next question. Funding for capital funding can include which of the following: general fund, general obligations, community development block grant program, or all the above? All the above, you got it. Unless amended and extended by the local approving body, how long do developed rights and responsibility agreements last? It's only every three years? Oh, yeah, go ahead. Answer is every five years, correct. Okay, I think that's the last one. Chip, any more? Can we, should we have solar panels in power?
There's a poll up.
I'm sorry, one more, sorry. Which of the following is true about newly annexed lands? Sorry, I'm trying to get us by three o'clocker. Must be contiguous to the existing municipal boundaries, can't be within another incorporated municipality, can't create unincorporated enclaves, or all the above? All the above, yes, sorry, I'm trying to do 13 things at once. Okay, real quick, can we or should we have solar panels in power transmission lines in rural urban areas? That's a good question. I can't answer that one per se, I think it's up to each individual jurisdiction and your community character issues. And thanks all for the session. I'm just gonna go quickly through my last slide here in closing. Now, first of all, thank you so much for presenting, Joe. Thank you for doing your two modules. This completes the first session of the two-phase sessions next week's, Paul Cucazella, March 3 at 1:00 p.m. Remind you, you need to do both to receive credit for this. At this time, want to make sure we got all the questions, I think we do. Again, I want to thank you so much for participating in today's webinar, and you have a great day, and we will see you next week at 1:00.
Thank you, Chuck, I'll just say.